Regardless of the court situation, that will be pushed aside. The 10% will reduce to 9%, and that'll then prevail under 218. The voters will approve that. We need 50-plus 1% to have this approval. And again, it's the voters' choice. We're simply giving the voters of the City of Los Angeles an opportunity to vote on this. If they voted down, then we're gonna have to find out how we're gonna cut $270 million out of the budget. If they vote to support it, their tax would go from 10% to 9%. Currently, we're paying 10%. We've been paying it for many, many years. So it's not really a new tax. And there's this whole possibility if the court rules against it. Well, if the court rules for it, we're still gonna push it aside and come up with the 9% versus the 10%.
Got it. Okay, thanks for clearing that up. As you know, both the chief legislative analyst and the city administrative officer are characterizing this proposed revision as a modernization of the telephone users' taxes, TUT. Yet they want a tax technology not yet available. Some people say, "Wait a minute, that's a new tax, and that has to be approved differently by the voters."
Well, that's clear. It would be a new tax under new technology. What they wanna do is modernize. Again, the internet, cell phones weren't here when this TUT tax was first implemented about 40-plus years ago. So what they wanna do is include any new technology that may take place. I don't think that's unfair, but under 218, the voters would approve this. That would then be captured in this tax base, which would hopefully, down the road, give us additional revenues for the additional services that we provide. Again, our city is expanding in population. We're at 4 million, and we're continuing to grow. We need to have sanitation trucks pick up the trash. We need to have the police officers, the fire, the libraries, the recs and parks, all those services that people oftentimes take for granted. Not just police officers and firefighters, but all those municipal services. We could cut trash pickup to one time a month instead of every week. I mean, there are cutbacks we can make, but what will be the negative impact on the city? We have to take that in consideration. So there's a lot of factors involved with this particular issue on this and the modernization when it comes to modernization of the telecommunications field.
And I guess for any viewer who's just parachuted into the middle of this controversy and doesn't understand it, as frankly, in many ways, I don't understand it, the council did not vote to implement this tax. You've just voted to put it in front of the voters in February, correct?
That's absolutely correct. This is gonna be the voters' choice. And there's a lot of people saying, "We don't wanna do it." If you don't wanna do it, then vote no. Vote no, but accept the consequences of a $270 million loss to the fund of the $3.8 billion. We'll make cutbacks. We can only make so many cutbacks. How many officers do we wanna cut? How many fire stations do we wanna close? How many libraries? How many times do we wanna cut back on the sanitation department and pick up of the refugees? There are many cutbacks that are gonna have to take place if this does not pass. And the mayor's committed to me that he will work vigorously to convince the voters of the City of Los Angeles how critical this is and how we can absorb this loss. But if the voters vote no, it's their choice. If they vote yes, we can remain stable. They vote no, we're gonna have some major consequences and major cutbacks again. 70%, nearly 70% of this budget goes for our law enforcement and our fire service. We don't have enough police officers. We have adequate fire service, but we can always have more. People have to pay for it, and that's what government does. We tax to provide a service. This loss would be a major loss for the services that the City of Los Angeles provides to the 4 million residents.
Of course, what you technically did this past week was to declare an emergency in the City of Los Angeles. Some people around the horseshoe have called it a 218 emergency. Yet I think you were a little uncomfortable at one time as we watched your discussion. Councilmember Smith, even Councilmember Hahn, were a little questioning of the notion that this is an actual emergency right now.
That's correct, and I was very vocal. Prove to me it's an emergency. Prove to me that if we don't have this revenue, we're gonna have disaster in the City of Los Angeles. And when I met with the mayor, and Mr. Smith, my colleague, met with the mayor, he was very convincing by telling us the consequences. Some people think there was some kind of a trade-off. There was no trade-off with the mayor. It was very clear. We cut this $270 million, these are the consequences. 2,700 police officers, half the firefighters, and other vital municipal services would be cut. Very clear. If the money's not there, we can't provide those services. It's not a scare tactic. It's a fact of life. If we don't have the money, we can't afford it, and that's the bottom line. So the mayor was very convincing to me, and that's why I changed to say, "Yes, we are gonna have an emergency if this doesn't pass. If we lose in court," which we don't know if that's gonna happen or not, "we don't have this 9% versus the 10% with the modernization, we would be facing a major emergency in the City of Los Angeles because we wouldn't have the facilities to pay, the resources to pay for those services that we currently provide to the people of this city."
And of course, a few days before, you did vote to declare that it would be an emergency. I saw here on Channel 35, we broadcasted live the mayor and members of the City Council Budget and Finance Committee talking to representatives of all the neighborhood councils around the city, trying to get their, I guess, buy-in to the notion that this would be an emergency and that they should go back and try to get voters to actually approve this.
That's clear, and I asked the mayor to do that. I told him I was skeptical. I told his staff I was skeptical. I told him that I wanna make sure that we convince the voters if it's, in fact, a true emergency. And clearly, when you look at the dollars that are available for the non-restricted, we have to pay off bonds. There are restricted funds. We have nearly a $7 billion budget, but when you take the restricted funds out of that equation, you got 3.82. And out of that comes us $270 million. So the bonds are being paid for. The other indebtedness that we have is gonna be taken care of. But these dollars are critical, and that's what I asked the mayor to do and through his staff. And he did go to the neighborhood council. I don't know if he convinced them or not, but people need to look at the numbers, they need to look at the impact, they need to look at the significance. We can be fiercely conservative, and we can be irresponsible in managing the City of Los Angeles. And the mayor is very adamant. His responsibility is to make sure the city is managed properly. Now, clearly, this loss would have a major, major impact on our ability to deliver services to the people of Los Angeles.
Well, let's get to another specific. You've talked about police, fire, trash, libraries, things like that. Might there also be layoffs of city employees? Aren't there things that we could do? For example, a few years ago, there was a hard hiring freeze in the City of Los Angeles. There's other ways that we could offset some of the loss potentially.
That's true. We could do a hiring freeze, and that's one of the options. The fact of the matter is, that's new hirings. We currently have people in positions, in the safety services, in the municipal services. If you don't have the money to pay, if you have a $270 million cut, you're gonna have to cut some positions. Certain people, certain positions, certain categories will lose their jobs. Certain departments may be consolidated. But we tried to come up with different formulas. The bottom line is, you're gonna have to have some major cuts. And when nearly 70% of the revenue from that fund, the $3.8 billion, goes into public safety, police and fire, where's the major cut gonna go? We could close down all the libraries. We could close down the recs and parks. We can close down many operations, but you're not gonna come up with that $270 million by shutting those departments. We can shut down the zoo. You can't come up with $270 million by doing that. So there'd be major cuts. We know that police and fire would have to absorb some of those cuts. Again, that's public safety. It's not a scare tactic. These are real numbers and real consequences if we don't have those dollars.
I'm not an economist, but it occurs to me that $270, $300 million taken out of the local economy could have a tremendous economic impact all on its own, even.
That's clear. I mean, this city runs on dollars. This city runs on sales revenues, and when we see the real estate market going through the crisis it's going through, when we see the stock market, when we see gas approaching $3.50, maybe $4 soon, it affects the economy of this city. If we don't have the dollars, obviously, we can't provide services. This city is run by about 40,000 municipal employees. Now, people may say, "We have too many municipal employees." But when your trash isn't picked up, and the rescue unit doesn't arrive, and you're having a heart attack, then people say, "Where are the services?" We have these services for the people of Los Angeles. We're obligated to deliver those services, and it costs money to deliver those services. So sure, there's a lot of consequences involved. Again, the issue is dollars and cents. $270 million out of that dollar that we have to provide services, basic services for the people of the city.
And during the meeting on Tuesday, the 16th, you also voiced some concerns about exemptions currently in the TUT. Are you comfortable with the answers that you received from that?
Well, the question came from reviewing all the exemptions. For example, telemarketers only pay a 5% versus the current 10% that everyone else is paying. That's an issue, and my colleague, Jack Weiss, brought that up. And there were other exemptions. For example, news services, news bureaus. Many of the radio stations no longer have news services. They're exempt altogether. When we start looking at the nine different categories of exemptions, I'm asking, are those appropriate? Maybe some of those should be paying. For entertainment, they should pay like everyone else. People in the military, in a combat zone, they should be exempt, and they are exempt under the current provision. But the exemptions, I made a motion, we're gonna get a report back to discover which of those exemptions should be eliminated or modified. Clearly, lobbying was done 40-plus years ago to exempt certain categories, and I think we need to review that and decide which ones are properly exempt, which ones should be revised and no longer exempt.
Finally, what happens now? For example, in the last few minutes, you've sounded very much as if you're now prepared to go out and campaign in favor of getting this 9% telephone users' tax approved on the ballot.
I'm gonna simply tell the voters and the constituents that I have of the consequences. I'm notorious for speaking the truth and for being direct. I get to the point. I learned that in many years of law enforcement. Get to the point. Just the facts, ma'am, Jack Webb. I wanna find out the facts, and I wanna tell the facts to the people. But it's up to them. If they wanna absorb those cuts, then vote no on this. It's clearly up to them. But I'm gonna give them the honest facts, the honest figures, and the consequences of that. If they want their trash picked up every week as it is now, or every other week, or once a month, if they wanna live with that, and they wanna live with a cut in the police department, the fire department, the paramedics, et cetera, if they're willing to accept that, then vote no. But I'm simply gonna give the facts and present the facts as they've been discussed with me and presented by the city folks. And if people wanna challenge these facts, I welcome the opportunity to challenge these facts. That's facts and figures and the numbers that are involved. They're all factual, they're all accurate, and I'm gonna simply deliver that message and let the voters make the choice. The choice is up to them.
Sounds like it's gonna be a lively discussion for the next several months. District 3 Councilmember Dennis Iain, thanks for coming in and joining us on Council Week in Review.
Always a pleasure being with you.
Here at Los Angeles City Council, in a unanimous vote of 14 ayes, approved the measure to declare a revenue emergency and to have a special election on Tuesday, February 5th, for the purpose of submitting to voters a reduction of tax rate and modernization of the telephone users' tax. L.A. City View is the government access cable channel for the City of Los Angeles, featuring live coverage of city council meetings and programming about city department services and events. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at And we invite you to address the Los Angeles City Council on any item on the council agenda, as well as during public comment. You may come downtown to City Hall, or go to the Van Nuys City Hall and participate via video teleconferencing. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the weekend ending October 19th, 2007. On behalf of Martine Martinez and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
L.A. City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel. Bring your family to Hollywood Santa Parade, Sunday, November 25th, at 5:00 p.m. Santa will be there to help kick off the holiday season in style. Come early to enjoy all that Hollywood has to offer. Go Metro to Hollywood and Highland. Call 1-866-PARADE-1 for more information.
Good morning. Welcome to the Los Angeles City Council. John Ferraro Chambers here at the Grand City Hall of Los Angeles. This is a meeting of the Los Angeles City Council for Friday, October 26th. The council today will recognize some great activities of great citizens, public employees, and others, and Special Heritage Month, so we're all going to be ready for a good meeting this morning. At this time, I'd like to recognize the great councilwoman of the 9th District for a special presentation, Councilmember Jad Perry.
Thanks, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to stay on schedule while we're waiting for the special presentation to come in. Let me just check and see if the members of the Toy District Task Force are here yet. Are they here yet?
Please, let's check. Toy District Task Force, fall in behind Councilmember Perry, right up here.
Okay, I guess they're shy. They're from Building and Safety. While they're coming up, these are outstanding city employees, created as part of a task force to bring order and improve the Toy District. Together, they have worked diligently to enforce city regulations... Come close, come close. ...to cite merchants for storing trash... Storing trash? Throwing trash on city streets, selling merchandise on sidewalks, and subleasing the space on the sidewalk in front of their stores to other merchants. The task force has been able to overcome many obstacles such as language barriers, resistant merchants, to make the Toy District area safe and much more consumer-friendly in our city. Their work has not only visually improved the Toy District community, but it will allow for consumers and merchants to have an all-around better experience when they visit this bustling area of downtown. So I just wanted to say to them publicly how much I appreciate what they have done, and I wanted to share with you what they have done and to give them their public accolades. With us today is Jean DiOrio, Senior Building Inspector, Jesse Acosta, Building Inspector, Roger Bruce, Building Mechanical Inspector, William Kuhn, Building Mechanical Inspector, Ed Lum, Building Mechanical Inspector, Andrew's not here. Okay, okay. Ruben Perez, Chief Code Enforcement Bureau, and Frank Bush, Chief Inspector, Code Enforcement Bureau of Pace. And I just wanna say thank you. Keep up the good work. This is money well spent. This is a major tourist area, and also just a very vibrant shopping area. So just let's give them a really big hand.
Thank you, Councilwoman. On behalf of the entire Code Enforcement Bureau of Building and Safety, I'd like to thank you for this recognition. Also, I'd like to remind everybody that Building and Safety's Code Enforcement Bureau is dedicated to the entire city to improve quality of life. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Perry, thank you very much. And inspectors, on behalf of all of us here too, we join with Ms. Perry in saluting you. Every day, you're trying to make the lives of Los Angeles and Angelinos better. Good work what you're doing downtown. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. Mr. Chair, my next one is not here, so I'll cede my spot right now to the next person.
Great, thank you very much. So if we could just review, Madam Clerk. We have Members Cardenas, Weezar, Parks, Perry, Rosenthal, Smith, and Weston here. And Mr. Weston, I know you have a very special presentation, and when it's ready, we'll be able to call you for that. I know, I'm not good, I'm not good. Give Herb Weston a big hand, everybody, for his great... And we're asking for members to arrive who are in council, scheduled to be in council as soon as possible. We thank you for that. Is this Chambers, who's named after John Ferraro, who served the City of Los Angeles for 35 years? Born in Bell, California, in Cudahy on the banks of the Los Angeles River.
That's right.
He grew up, went to Los Angeles Public Schools, went to Bell High School, was an All-Star Eagle for the Bell High School football team, and got a scholarship to the University of Southern California. His college career, like many, was interrupted due to World War II. He served in the United States Navy. He was appointed by Mayor Paulson to a police commission, served the Los Angeles Police Commission for many years. But then he was then appointed by Mayor Yordi to fill the vacant seat of the 4th District by Harold Henry, who was the councilman at the time of the 4th District, and later re-elected several times and served as president. John Ferraro was one of the most prominent Italian-Americans in Los Angeles, California history, and a great All-American for the University of Southern California. So that's why these chambers are named after John Ferraro. Madam Clerk, if you could just give me a rundown, how many items do we have today?
Mr. President, you have 33 items.
Good, so we're gonna take care of those when we get a quorum and we're able to do that. This is good. We're waiting for other members to join us as well, as well as the mayor for a very special presentation for American Indian Heritage Month. We will continue our presentations momentarily. Yes, Madam Perry?
My next one may be here in just a minute, and it's not too long.
Every day is special in Los Angeles, but this Sunday is National Make a Difference Day throughout the country, and especially in California. People are asked to join in various groups and organizations to make a difference. And I know many of us, within the sound of our voice, do make differences every day, so we ask you to get involved with the Make a Difference Day USA, sponsored by USA Today Newspaper. So make a difference, Angelino, what you do every day. Yeah, Ms. Perry, please, just for the... Do a special... Again, please welcome Councilmember Jad Perry.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll just do this. If I could invite Andre Williams and Stephen Collins over here to the podium with me. Andre and Stephen, just take the tape, it's okay. How are you? Thank you for coming in. I know you had a hard time in the parking lot, right? How are you?
Hi.
Okay, come on up, come on up for you. Okay, this is a nice story, and I wanna, I just wanna tell this story so that you understand how people really do care for each other. We have some folks here. I'm gonna introduce some, but Andre Williams and Stephen Collins. On July 13th, 2007, these two young men, two young brothers, were arriving home late one night when they noticed that the home of their neighbor, Alma Green, was on fire. They ran inside to ensure that Mrs. Green was safe. Once they got inside, they found out she was asleep, so they woke her up, they rushed her outside to safety, and they awaited the arrival of the fire department. They saved her life. These young men are heroes, and they deserve the recognition that they are receiving today. Often, we hear stories that are negative about South Los Angeles, and many times, the media doesn't cover the positive stories. The brave actions of these two young men demonstrate the power of family, the power of community, and demonstrate that South L.A. is a place where neighbors take care of and look out for one another and are genuinely concerned for each other. So I wanted to say thank you to Andre and Stephen for not only risking your lives to save the life... save the life of your neighbor, but for contributing to the betterment of our community. Your actions on July 13, 2007 demonstrate your courage, your character, and your compassion. And with that, I'd like to ask the gentlemen to just to quickly introduce their family members, and then, Alma.
No, I'm the mother.
Okay, you're the mother. This is the mother. All right. All right, well, why don't you, mother, do you want to introduce everybody since you're the boss?
Go ahead.
All right, the boss is going to introduce everybody. Say your name.
Good morning, my name is Trudy Long. This is my son to the left, that's Stephen Collins, and to the right is Andre Williams, my neighbor, Ms. Doris Jenkins, and my daughter-in-law, Toya, and most of all, Ms. Alma.
Ms. Alma Green.
Green. Green.
Well, you've got a beautiful mother, a beautiful family. Let's give them a big hand. And also, Ms. Perry, thank you for that presentation. We want the young people to go to 700 East Temple. We're looking for good firefighters, good men and women, maybe there's a job for you.
Thank you. The fellows are hesitant to say anything, but this is Ms. Alma Green, and she just wanted to say thank you. Right here, just stop, it's okay.
Good morning to everyone. And I would just want to thank Andre and Steve for what they've done for me, and most of all, I thank God that I'm still here.
God bless you. Let's give Ms. Green a big hand, too.
Ms. Green, thank you very much. Councilwoman Perry, thank you. Andre and Steve, give them a bigger hand for what they did.
I'm going to take you all in the back and take a nice picture, okay?
My mother's birthday is mine.
Okay. We're going in the back.
Ms. Perry, you want to come to the back here? We'll go to...
Yes.
That'd be great.
I'll see you in a second. Don't go away. All right.
Okay, sergeants, is everything in order there for the center aisle? I'd like at this time to welcome the Mayor of the City of Los Angeles, the Honorable Antonio Villagosa, as we celebrate Native American Month in the city of Los Angeles. American Heritage... American Indian Heritage Month.
I want to thank you, Councilmembers, Council President Garcetti. Thank you, and Councilmember Perry. It's an absolute honor to be here today for a second year in a row with all my relations to recognize the history, the culture, and the vast achievements of the American Indian community in this great city. You know, Councilmember Garcetti and I like to talk about the pobladores, and we talk often about the pobladores, the first 44 settlers. But what we always remember, it was not the pobladores that were here in Los Angeles first, it was the Tongva, the Tataviam, and the Chumash people who were here. They were and will always remain... They were and will always remain the first people of Los Angeles. It is an honor for me, as Mayor of Los Angeles, to be standing here at City Hall, where at one time stood the Tongva Village of Yagnah. Yagnah, the village where the Tongva settled by the river and a great sycamore tree which grew into a thriving center of trade. But American Indian Heritage Month is not just a history month celebrating a distant time, it's a celebration of a culture that thrives today. And I think we saw that with the young children who were performing for us right now. What's so important about this opportunity for us to celebrate the Native American people is that with celebrations like this, we continue to cherish and nurture the traditions, the culture of the native people of Los Angeles and around the nation. Almost 200 nations are woven into the city's rich ethnic tapestry, including the Dena, the Lakota, and the Cherokee. Our American Indian roots are deep, strong, and thriving today. And the voice of this community is heard loud and clear in so much of what many of us here in City Hall have as a vision for Los Angeles. A vision that respects the bounty of Mother Nature, preserves our open space and our waterways, a vision that cares for its elderly and its sick, a vision for a city that nourishes a sense of community, and that asks us all to think about others before we think about ourselves. I'd like to recognize our local tribal leadership for all they do to keep our wonderful American Indian culture alive in the city of Los Angeles. Anthony Morales, Senior, the Tribal Chair of the Tongva Gabrielino Indians. Rudy Ortega, Junior, the Tribal Chair of the Tatvian Fernadeño Indians. And on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, I'm proud to declare the month of November as American Indian Heritage Month. I do want to say something about those who are not with us. A number of the chairpersons of the various tribes in Southern California were going to be here today. But as many of you know, Southern California has been ravaged by fires. Those fires have affected seven or eight reservations in Southern California. And so, of course, the chairpersons could not leave their reservations in a time of need. And so, our hearts are held out to the native peoples of Southern California, whose homes have been devastated by the fires, and we obviously send our love and our prayers to them in these times. And now, I'd like to unveil the... If I could have a few of you...
Come with me.
Keep going, keep going.
As these are our homelands.
That's fine, thank you.
Heritage Month. There we go. I'd like to unveil the Native American Heritage Month calendar. As you know, this isn't just an opportunity to celebrate for a day, it's an opportunity to educate our young people and share with the city all of the breadth and depth, the richness of the tapestry of native cultures here in Los Angeles. Absolutely beautiful. The artist is here.
Don Jackson Sagana Chipowa and Rudy Ortega, Junior.
Says "Celebrating and Embracing the Diversity of Los Angeles American Indian Tribal Community." Beautiful, thank you so much. Councilmember Perry is who's always here celebrating all of our Heritage Months is with us. Councilmember Perry.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and it's a real pleasure to stand here with you and all of our friends, our brothers and sisters, to celebrate American Indian Heritage Month. Not only is this month a great opportunity to broaden our understanding, our knowledge, and our appreciation for the great history of our country, the great history of a people, but to understand the significance of the mix of cultures and tribes within the American Indian community. It is important that we celebrate and recognize our brothers and sisters, and it is also important to make sure that in the next census, the census that is coming up, that people recognize and support the American Indian community in making sure that each and every person gets counted, so that they can derive their fair share of federal dollars to deal with the educational issues, the health issues, the housing issues, the things that people in other parts of the country and other cultures may take for granted. Oftentimes, American Indians are not necessarily counted as American Indians, and then, when they are undercounted, their community gets short-changed for the absolutely necessary funding that they need to improve the health and the quality of life, not only for seniors, not only for families, but for the children who are coming up. So I just want to say, not only to celebrate this month and to mark this day, but use this day as a way to remember how important it will be to support this community in the upcoming census, and congratulations. Thank you for including me, Mr. Mayor, and thank you.
Thank you. And we have some other council members that would like to give their wishes, and then, just before, Mr. Cardenas is our first speaker. We're going to have a few other council members add their good wishes, Mr. Cardenas, and then, Mr. Rosendahl, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Weston.
Thank you very much. I think it's a great day. Thank you so much, Mayor Villagosa, for bringing this forward and celebrating this wonderful day where we celebrate our first Americans, the first Americans. And one of the things that I... One of the things that I'm very proud of is when I was a young legislator, before all this gray hair and stuff, when I was a freshman legislator, there was an evening where I was able to stand up and fight for some Native American tribes, sovereign nations in California. And that was a very big day for me. I didn't realize it at the moment, but it was a day where I reflected later on about what it meant. And what it meant to me was just doing the right thing, respecting nations, respecting people, respecting communities that far too often are disrespected and have been disrespected. When you look at the genocide in the history of this world and this country, and the genocide upon Native Americans in North America, right here in the United States, it is a sad, sad reality that that has occurred, yet at the same time, I have actually stood with Native Americans. And I'll give you an accounting, when I was on a tribal land, talking to a chairman who had just finished telling me, not lamenting, not complaining, but I asked him, what was it like growing up in this community? And he gave me some accountings about how he was treated by his teachers, how he was treated by the kids across the neighborhood, and how he was disrespected day after day. But now, as a chairman, he was so proud of the fact that they now have a clinic on their land. And he pointed at that clinic, and he said, even though, when we were sick, the surrounding community would not give us health care to my grandparents, to my parents, to me. He said, when you look at our clinic, if any person from the community at large comes into that clinic, they will be served. No animosity, no anger. Love, commitment to the community, respect, forgiveness, the kinds of qualities that I find amazing for a community like Native Americans to exude day after day. And that example has been presented to me over and over and over again. I am so proud to say that we are blessed, as a nation, to have the Native American community teach us so much about our land, how to respect it, about each other, and how to respect each other, and to show us that regardless of the fact that they were almost eliminated from this earth, they are willing to forgive and to give tremendously, tremendously. I am proud to say that many of you, I look at you today, you are my friends, we know each other. I am so proud and glad that you were willing to come to our city and be with us today on your day. Thank you once again, Mayor. This is a tremendous opportunity for Angelinos to learn more about what Native Americans mean to our great nation, and how much they give us, how much they teach us. Thank you so much. And on a little note to my nine-year-old daughter, I can go home today and tell her, you look a lot like the cartoon Pocahontas. Do you have something to do with that? Do you? Can you please share with us? Because I got to tell my daughter that I think I met... Pocahontas is a cartoon to us, to my nine-year-old daughter. Please share with us. She's... I'm going to make her watch this today, please.
Yes, I was the voice of Pocahontas. I am the voice of Disney's Pocahontas. It is... It has been a beautiful pleasure to be able to, over the years that Pocahontas has been out, to be able to go around, all around the world, and share a part of American Indian culture, and to share the beautiful story of an 11-year-old girl who threw herself upon John Smith to stop a war from happening. And she was a heroine because of that. To believe that a young person could do something like that, I think is a very beautiful thing, and she's one of my heroes, and she will always be one of my heroes. And getting to be Pocahontas is kind of like getting to be Santa Claus your whole life, and it's a beautiful thing.
Thank you. Thank you very much, thank you.
I am Inupiaq, Yupik from Alaska, and on my father's side, I am Northern Cree. And in the Inupiaq way to say thank you, and I would like to just say kwayana.
Thank you very much. Thank you for joining us today.
Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning. First, I want to say that if we listen to the American Indian community and its culture, we will be able to do what we need to do about the environment. We should learn that Mother Earth, which you have said since the moment you've existed, is everybody's mother, and the way you treat Mother Earth is the way you should treat it. And we have lessons to learn from the American Indian community as we go into this climate change, disaster on the earth, and we look forward to your continued leadership on that. And I'd like to say to Anthony Morales from the Gabrielotanga, I want to pledge to you this month of November that we will make a solution at Playa Vista to put the 400 remains of your ancestors... We must consecrate a piece of land in a sacred way, in your tradition. And we must make this month of November the month when we get all parties together, in the spirit of the Great Spirit, to do this. We cannot rest until the sacred remains are interred in a sacred spot with the blessings that you all need to do for it. I pledge you, we as a city will work firmly with you on that. And Chief, when you speak, I want to know why three feathers. We know that three is considered very sacred in many religions. I'd like to know why we have three feathers on the poster, as well as in the discussion here. But thank you so much for coming here this time. And I look forward to your leadership on environmental issues for our great nation and world. Thank you so much.
Mr. Reyes is our next speaker.
Thank you, Council President. Just rise to thank our mayor and thank you for your presence in celebrating this incredible culture and tradition. As I look through the book, I see Tia Chuchas Centro Cultural. The program will integrate Machika philosophy and Navajat language to boost an appreciation of the cultural traditions and ancestral knowledge of the indigenous people that spread from the southwest United States to Mexico and Central America. Imagine if all the youngsters that live around the Southwest Museum, all the youngsters involved in gangs, because they've pledged an identity to a number, a street, name, and kill each other for it. Imagine if they understood the beauty of the truths that you speak about our earth, about our environment, about respect, about love. Imagine if they had that knowledge. And imagine if we could have the Southwest Museum, the only museum dedicated to American Indians, to have the ability to learn from that history. What a void we would fill and what sense of self-esteem we could stimulate because of your song, your tradition, and everything you bring to this earth. For that, I thank you. And I hope we can continue to applaud and celebrate this culture. And then, just maybe, the 50% of the dropout youth will get sucked into the gang culture, will understand that just maybe they have a choice and option for something better. Thank you for that.
Mr. Wesson.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I've been blessed my entire life. And one of the greatest blessings for me, and I would guess for Mr. Cardenas and Mayor Viergoza, was our opportunity to serve in the state legislature. Because it was there that I had an opportunity to develop real, strong relationships with tribal governments throughout this great state. And I don't know, and I have to thank you again, Mr. Mayor, because when I first got to the Assembly, I chaired the GO Committee that oversaw Indian gaming and a variety of things. And I had the opportunity to go to gaming tribes, non-gaming tribes. And I'll tell you, I learned a lot and I made some good friends. What a lot of people don't realize that African-Americans were not the only slaves in this country. And I have never been treated with more respect than when I went to visit my Indian brothers and sisters. And I don't know why they're so fiercely loyal. Maybe it's because our government lied to them time after time after time, broken promise after broken promise. And that built within them this desire that when I give you my word, I will keep my word. So it has just been a pleasure for me to work with you. I am proud of all of the phenomenal things that you've done for this state in particular, all of the jobs that you've created, how you have taken the god-worst-looking pieces of earth and transformed them into magnificent places where individuals felt, in this government, "Oh, we'll just stick 'em on this rock." Boy, they wish they had them rocks today. They wish they could take those rocks back. And I do want to say, on a serious note, that my prayers, and I'm sure the prayers of the entire council, goes out to your brothers and sisters who are dealing with the tremendous fires that are going on right now. And I will close by just saying, for those of you that I know, it is wonderful to see you again. For those of you that I do not know, that it is indeed my pleasure to meet you. And don't be surprised if I pop up, because I still travel up and down the state and I'm still treated like the friend that I was treated when I was in the California State Assembly. God bless you all. Thank you, thank you so much for coming.
Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Mr. Labonge.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, Ms. Perry, and Olga Vry, your cultural affairs. Give her a big hand, because I think that's an important role that you have there, the new general manager. Have you been up the Golden State Freeway lately, Mr. Mayor, and saw the hills in Griffith Park and the green? It's not St. Patrick's Day, they're doing mulching, you know? But we all have our heritage. And what's so important that we celebrate our heritage, and today, with all of you and the children coming in, we celebrate this month to make all Angelinos aware. Because the greatest thing about this city, where the power comes from all of us, is that we're from someplace else. And now, we meet the Native people, who have always been here in this North American continent in this way, shape, or form. As a child, one day in 1961, I was taken by my uncle, because my mother was ill, to Arizona. And we lived next to those of the Yavapai Nation. And when I speak to my brothers, of which I got seven, I tell them, "I was with the Yavapai." It makes me stronger than them. And that makes me feel good as a human being all these years. God bless you all. This is gonna be a great month as we celebrate this. And I appreciate you all coming down to City Hall as we celebrate what Mr. Rosendahl said is a great thing and all of us said. Thank you very much, good job.
Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Mr. Weezer.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'm really happy that we're celebrating this month because just a few weeks ago, at the Southwest Museum, and it was mentioned by my colleague, Councilmember Ed Reyes, here in the city of Los Angeles, we have one of the largest, most important collections of Native American artifacts at the Southwest Museum. Working with our mayor, Antonio Viergoza, and our council president, Eric Garcetti, we got a commitment from the Autry to preserve the 250,000 artifacts that have been decaying for years at the Southwest Museum. And we got a commitment to display them at the Southwest Museum, at the Griffith Park site, in order for all of Los Angeles to see the culture of Native Americans here in Los Angeles. And I wanted to thank the Autry, I wanted to thank the mayor and council president, Garcetti. Some of you were with us that day, we thank you for that. And I think that's a huge victory for us. We're finally paying attention to a true treasure here in Los Angeles. I also wanted to take this opportunity to invite in the City Hall chambers, the American Indian Dance Theater, who is performing at the Latino Theater Company. They're coming in the chambers just now in the back. Welcome. They have received a Grammy and Emmy Award nominations. They are performing at the Latino Theater Company, October 25th, 26th, 27th, and 28th. We invite all Angelinos, come out and truly enjoy what Native Americans have offered us for centuries. Thank you very much.
And our final speaker on the queue, Mr. Parks.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to say thank you, Mr. Mayor, for acknowledging this month. And it is also gratifying as we sit here and we see the months go by as it relates to Hispanic heritage, Black heritage, the Indian heritage. But it also, I think, should send a message. It's just not during that month that we need, as a community, to continue looking at how our relationships are ongoing. Certainly, the mayor's taking the lead role to make sure that as the goal line goes east, that we are taking appropriate care of those burial sites, as Mr. Rosendahl talked about on the west side, so that we can make sure that it's appropriately dealt with as they tunnel underneath the street. One of the things I think, as Mr. Wesson talked about, as far as there's times in which people categorize different cultures and they forget that many times, the Indian culture and some of the Black culture in the history are very similar and that they were not the only slaves. But one of the things I'm finding out from following some of my family is that in Oklahoma, the Parks family are very intertwined with the Indian culture and have married within that culture. And so, as we begin to develop our own family trees to find out just how inimigo we are. And I can think back, sitting at the Figaro Theater, it's gone for the last 20 years, for those who would go out looking for it. But to sit there in the balcony and watch and how poorly they treated the Indian culture on all of the movies that were portrayed and that term such as savage and all those other things that were put in the movie. And you can all replay historically those films. When the cavalry showed up, the music would change and everybody would stand and cheer. Because I don't think many times kids understood just how negative that impression was until you became older and understood that that was a people that we were talking about, that was a culture. And in many instances, this country was built on their backs in the sense of how they were mistreated. And so, I am so pleased that as we have these kinds of events, that it gives us a chance to educate the whole community about what your contributions and other contributions... But I hope it sends a message that every day, we should be looking and benefiting from that culture.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. And I appreciate all the councilmembers' comments. And, Mr. Mayor, you bringing this presentation here. And I think everything that needs to be said has been said. I'll just add very briefly that as much as Los Angeles denied its past, tried to erase its past, we know that its past is here. Yagna meant "place of poison oak." So somebody, one of our ancestors in the past, certainly had a sense of humor because it was only a few feet away from where City Hall is now. So not a lot has changed in 10,000 years, but we... Still a little scratchy place around here sometimes. But we also celebrate, as every single day, we... Many of us get into our cars and we drive freeways. Those freeways are where the original parkways were. Those are where the Spanish roads were. And they are built right over where the Indian pathways were. So when we see a map of Los Angeles and we see a map of our freeways, it's actually a map of the old Indian pathways that used to exist here. So as much as we tried to erase history over time, it came back. And we are so glad that it has come back and that we embrace it and that the native history of Los Angeles is indeed, truly, the roots of this great city. So God bless you all and thank you all for being here. And we'll turn it over, some words from our leaders as well, from the Native American community. Thank you.
I'm no stranger to this mic, so... Me yija yoi yehiya. Good morning and greetings to all of you. It's with great honor and a happy heart that I stand before all of you here. And it's an honor, because we are Native America. And we are being honored today by Mayor Antonio Viergoza, by all of you, the city council members, and the city of Los Angeles as Native American Month. Again, it's... We're here with a happy heart. We're here with pleasure, with honor. And again, thank you for honoring Native America. In closing, wa aguata tayi hanuka in the memory of our ancestors. Nentwanda Chief Tomiar Anthony Morales. My name is Anthony Morales. I'm the tribal leader of the Gabriel Otunga San Gabriel Banda Mission Indians. The mission that my ancestors built 235 years ago in 1771. 10 years later, in 1781, we were also the founders of what today is Yagna, Los Angeles. Thank you.
Good morning, Mayor and council. I would like to thank all of you and the mayor for inviting our tribe over. And I wish that I could say more than just my people being here with you people. I thank you very much. My name is Rudy Ortega Senior, Chief Little Bear from the Fernando Tatavián tribe in San Fernando, California.
Thank you very much, Mr. President, council. Thank you. Thank you so much. And I know the festivities will continue in the forecourt. We invite folks to join us there. Madam Clerk, can we call the roll?
Alepon Cardenas, Grul Han, Weezer Labonge, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti. 12 members present and inform, Mr. President.
Okay, we're just gonna run through the agenda very quickly. And then, Mr. Weezer will do our next presentation. If we can, please take up the first order of business.
First order of business is approval of the October 23rd minutes.
Thank you. Ms. Grul moves, I'll second those, without objection, those are approved. Next order of business?
Next are commendatory resolutions for approval.
Okay, Mr. Labonge moves, Mr. Weezer seconds, without objection, those are approved as well.
Mr. President, would you like to go through public comments?
Let's wait on public comment, run through the agenda, please. And then, we'll go to presentations and come back for public comment. First items?
Items one and two are items due for public hearing. Both are determinations of public convenience or necessities where motions are required.
Okay. Ms. Grul, item number one?
Yes, I just wanted to deny without prejudice.
Okay, Ms. Grul moves to deny without prejudice on number one. Let's go ahead, if nobody else wishes to be heard, there's no speaker cards. Please open the roll on one.
Mr. President, there is a speaker card on item number two.
Right, this is just on number one? If we can open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
That is approved, item number two. We'll call special for card from the public. Next items, please?
Next are items three through 24, and those are items which public hearings have been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call three through 24 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
23, I requested the Senate district continued for 30 days?
All right, reconsider 23, please. Open the roll, close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Continue how long, Mr. Labonge? 30 days, okay? Without objection to the 27th of November. Next items, please?
Next are items 25 through 30, and those are items where public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, I do not see public speaker cards on those. We'll open and close the public hearing. Anybody wishing to call 25 through 30 special? Seeing none, let's open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Those are approved. And continuation agenda, please?
On the continuation agenda, item 31 is an item where public hearing has been held.
Okay. Anybody wish to call that special? None, let's go ahead and open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
And thank you to Mr. Weezer, Northeast. We're almost done, two more things to vote on, number 32, please. We will go ahead and open and close the public hearing on that. Nobody wishing to call that special? Let's go ahead and open the roll? Please close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
That is approved. If you'll call the roll for the special meeting? Which one? Okay, can we reconsider, please? I think that's been circulated, so it was amended. I did initial that, so...
No.
You wanna call it special?
We have 32, we just have... We have to just strike the language of application requirements.
Okay, let's go ahead and open the roll on reconsideration of 32. Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Okay, and with that amendment? Would you say that one more time, Ms. Han? Would you say that one more time, Ms. Han?
12, 33. First moving clause, just strike the phrase "and application requirements."
Yes, we just want to strike, in the first paragraph, just strike the language "and application requirements."
Okay. As amended, if there's no objection, please open the roll? Close the roll and tabulate the vote?
12 eyes.
Okay, and we will return to presentations. Mr. Weezer?
Thank you very much.
Thank you for your patience and thank you to all, Northeast, that is here.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. And I'm really honored to be here today with my colleague, Councilmember Ed Reyes, to honor a true public servant who has decided to retire the great ALEPD after, how many years? 35 years on the force of the ALEPD. Let's give him a big round of applause. Let's give him a big round of applause. Joe Galindo is truly one of L.A.'s finest and an inspiration to all of us. He is a P3 plus one, and he recently retired as a senior lead officer for the community of Eagle Rock in northeast Los Angeles, part of the northeast police station. He began his public service by serving this country in Vietnam. He joined the L.A.P.D. in 1972 and spent his entire career in the northeast division. He spent the next 35 years serving this area, the same area where he was born and raised, the same area where he bought his home and raised his own family. For the past 16 years, he has served as a senior lead officer of the area. He is someone who is known by almost every businessperson in Eagle Rock, by every community resident, and certainly by all the number of community organizations that he is there and supporting. Anytime there was an incident, an event, or a neighborhood issue, Joe Galindo was there. He consistently donated his free time to help our community, he provided support, and he supported comfort to many of the residents in Eagle Rock. He was always accessible, a voice of reason, and let me tell you, Joe was not only a voice of reason, but he was never afraid to speak his mind. As a matter of fact, just a few weeks ago, when we are preparing for these presentation and this recognition, he called my office and offered to postpone the presentation. You see, he was concerned that given the fires that are throughout the state of California, that people he wanted to invite, the officers you see here standing with us today, would be distracted from fulfilling their duty to protect and serve the public. That's the type of person that Joe Galindo is. And as you see here today, we are honoring a man that is supported by his fellow officers, someone who I've gotten to know quite well in the Eagle Rock area, and someone who I've often relied on to ensure that we continue to provide the safety for the many persons who live in Eagle Rock. Even after he retired, he decided to become a reserve officer. That's how committed Joe Galindo is to the people of the city of Los Angeles. So ladies and gentlemen, we are here to recognize a public servant after 35 years. He's not leaving us, he's going to be a reserve officer. But before we give him his recognition, I wanted to ask my colleague, Councilmember Ed Reyes, to share a few words.
Thank you, Councilman Wezar. My only regret is that we didn't do this sooner. I know in the summer, is when I heard he was going to retire, so I'm glad we're doing it today. You know, I grew up in Cypress Park, it's the same neighborhood that Joe Galindo grew up in, the same neighborhood that Councilman Mike Hernandez grew up in. And when you grow up in this neighborhood, you can, you have that ability, that insight, to distinguish between those who really want to see positive change in the neighborhood and those who would take advantage of that neighborhood. Officer Galindo is that officer who would show up at a community meeting and the sheer presence would shut down those, those antagonistic thuds, thugs, would come and try to intimidate the community. It was his history, his tenacity, his commitment, that made sure that the bad guys stayed away and allowed the good people to participate in public events, in social services. And one day, he finally told me, I want to thank you for standing up to this one thug, that guy needed it. The community needs to understand that it has power, it has representation, and he thanked me. I in turn felt humbled and said, Joe, you're the one who are making the good things happen over the years. You're the one that has the presence because you're here every day, every night, in the very same neighborhoods you grew up in. And for that, I'll always thank him. Captain Perez, Sonia Rimkunis, who's right here sharing time and acknowledging Joe, and the rest of our officers have been a great job in our district. These are the unsung heroes. She said, just call me Sonia. But she helped us shut down a very troubled neighborhood, a home in there that was being used for some very ugly things, dealing with pornography and other such activity. And after years and years of plaguing the street, we finally shut it down. So these are the kinds of experiences that we've, we've been able to enjoy. These are the stories you don't read about in the newspaper. So I'm very glad to be here and celebrate Joe's career, one of the unsung heroes of the northeast. And thank you, Councilman Wezar, for making this happen. Thank you very much.
And that's my senior lead officer, Sonia Rimkunis, that you're talking about. It's great to see her and also I want to thank Officer Galindo for the great work. I know in Glassell Park, it spilled over and he did a lot of great things for Glassell Park as well. And you've been part of an extraordinary SLO team, um, and the SLOs are just amazing in northeast and a part of a very proud tradition. I see Mr. Labange and Mr. Parks as well. But I want to thank you personally for the service you've given to the northeast, uh, community, and we are definitely, definitely going to miss you. So appreciate that and thank you very much, Mr. Wezar and Mr. Reyes for their comments. Mr. Parks would like to add his good wishes as well, and then Mr. Labange.
I thank you, Mr. President. Where's Joe? Joe, let me just say thank you for all those years. Unique type situation to spend all your career in one area, but the fact that, and most people don't know what all those white stripes are, that's five years per stripe, but to be that kind of a legend in the community to where people remember you and the standard that people are going to remember is that they'll judge every senior lead in the future on your standard, which is your legacy for the city of Los Angeles. Just as often, we hear people still talk about Rudy de Leon and Hollenbeck and, uh, as a standard for a captain of police in the division, that's the same kind of thing that will follow you and that people will be judging people to say, did you do it the Galindo way? Do you understand the community in which, the way he did? And you didn't just give it lip service, you were physically out there. Excuse me, I don't know if I've ever been to a community, a community event that you weren't present, whether it was in your district or not. And so that was the importance that you placed on that whole issue, being a senior lead and clearly understanding what a senior lead did. It wasn't just going to the Friday and Saturday brunches and things of that, it was actually understanding what community problems were and getting the basic cards to work on them. And I think the fact that you grew up in that system, that you had the ability to understand what that role was. And I want to thank you personally because there's only 168 of you and you do a tremendous job of communicating with 4 million people. And sometimes we wonder if, if we give you enough resources, but clearly you found a way to deal with it. And so, thank you very much.
Mr. Labange?
Thank you very much and, uh, Mr. Reyes, Mr. Wezar. This is what is great about the Los Angeles Police Department. Uh, as someone serves the city so well, it's at the standard. But also what's great about the city of Los Angeles is you turn another chapter. And I hope you have a good, long retirement, and I hope you get as many stripes in your retirement with you and your family as you did give for the city. Thank you so much.
Please.
And, uh, colleagues, uh, before we hear from the man himself, we have several officers with us, uh, to speak. First is Officer Sonia Rimkunis.
Good morning, thank you for having us. Um, just as a coworker of Joe's, um, just want to express or reiterate, it's just been a privilege to have been able to work with him, um, for the last nine years that I've known him. And he's really touched northeast division and he has touched us so much that we even, um, as many of you may not know, we retired his basic car when he retired. We retired the basic car, renamed it 11A17, so the Eagle Rock car is now 11A17, which is pretty significant. So he'll always be a, a big part of the history of northeast division and we'll always remember him and it's just been a great privilege. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Also with us today, Sergeant Alanis.
Uh, good morning, my, my name is Sergeant Robert Alanis. I've been a sergeant for the last 13 years and a police officer for 25 years. And the day that I hit the streets, Joe Galindo was my training officer. And I'm very proud to be a part of, uh, this festivity to honor him. And I want to thank the mayor and the city council for taking this time out. And I want to congratulate, uh, Joe at, at this time. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And also with us is Captain Jose Perez, who's the new captain for the northeast division, someone who has also been out there at community meetings, shares a lot of his personal time to get to know the community, one community that he already knew very well, but also someone who's revigorating northeast division. So, uh, ladies and gentlemen, help me welcome Captain Jose Perez.
Thank you, Councilmen. I just want to thank the city council and our four council districts that are constantly supporting us at northeast, Councilman Reyes, Councilman Labange, Councilman Garcetti, and Councilman Wezar, and for giving us this, uh, opportunity to recognize Joe Galindo. I would just like to close with saying that Joe Galindo represented everything that was good about the Los Angeles Police badge, and I'm glad to see that he's continuing to wear the reserve badge. Thank you, Joe.
Thank you very much. And, uh, ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the city council, I wanted to present to Joe Galindo this certificate, uh, this resolution on behalf of the city of Los Angeles, the mayor of the city of Los Angeles congratulating and thanking Joe Galindo for his years of service to the city of Los Angeles and particularly the community of Eagle Rock. Muchisimas gracias.
Thank you so much.
Tippy toes and back.
Tippy toes and back.
One for the wall on San Fernando Road.
Believe me, it's going to be there.
One for the battery that operates.
Thank you. It's all yours, man. You got a couple of hours.
No, I'm, I'm not going to take too long. I, I want to start by saying, uh, thank you to, uh, my parents, my sisters, and my family, and my wife and my children that, uh, supported me for 35 years. My parents, who grew up in Cypress Park and kept me on the straight line, because like Mike Hernandez and Ed Reyes knew that it was two directions that go back in those days. You can go the right directions where I'm at today, or you could end up in the prison with the gang members. And it was, it was a, it's a hard task when you're growing up in these communities that know what to do when you're a young man. But I took the right direction and I want to say that I, I always wanted to work the streets of L.A. That's why I never wanted to promote, never wanted to be a detective or a sergeant or a captain. I wanted to be on the streets of L.A. to help the people. I did go for a while, plainclothes detective, and I knew I was missing something. And what I was missing, I was missing helping the people of, of northeast division, who in return always was there for the northeast officers. They always supported northeast division any way they could, in any way we needed help, our blend, our CPAD, and different organizations, they always had open hands for the officers of northeast. I want to take a minute to thank the officers, the men and women of northeast that made my job for 35 years as, as a joy every day going to work. They always helped each other. It was fun every day going out there and helping people and catching the bad guys because we did have some bad guys in northeast. And I want to take a minute to thank the mayor, who I worked for when he was, uh, the councilman in, uh, Eagle Rock. And I started off with Art Snyder, Mike Hernandez, uh, Pacheco, Ed Reyes, Wezar, I mean, I can go way back, uh, Peggy, yeah, Peggy Stevens, I went way back. It's always been a positive thing working with the council office. They've always been there for the police officers in northeast, and I'm sure they're there for everybody in the city of L.A., the rest of the city. When we needed help, you go see them and within 24 hours, 48 hours, they picked up the garbage, they painted out the graffiti, they helped the people that needed help. And like I said, that's why I made my job very easy to be a senior lead officer and work in northeast for 35 years. I plan to give back something now and want to be a reserve in northeast. I hope I can do that, maybe not 35 years, but maybe 10 or 15 years, whatever. But, uh, all I can say is, uh, I wish I, I could have been around a little longer to help the city of L.A. And the only thing I can ask you, city council, is get more police officers, more men and women in the uniform, because we need more officers in the city of L.A. Sometimes, uh, it takes a little long time for a unit to get there because they're short. But I know today, the officers today in uniform work harder today than they did 35 years ago. And I'm a man that always said what's on his mind and always spoke the truth, and these officers today work harder today than they did 35 years ago, even 25 years ago. So they need more support and, uh, I voted for that trash increase, so I'm hoping we can see more officers on the street. And anything I can do for you guys, thank you very much. Thank you for this wonderful day. Always remember it. Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Congratulations, Joe, and you just reminded me that you were not only providing public safety in northeast, but many people came to you for your basic city services. And he didn't say, no, that's not my job. He went out and got those people the help, no matter what it was. So thank you again and congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
How's it going? How's it going?
A little late, but here we are.
How's it going?
A little late.
Madam President, thank you again. I'm here to present and to recognize El Dia del Bracero. With me here standing is Councilmember Tony Garlones, whose father was a bracero as well as mine. And, uh, this is a very special day for both of us and for many of the families who are related to braceros. We are very happy to announce that each September 29th, we celebrate El Dia del Bracero. But while we celebrate the many contributions that these men made to this country, to the United States, we also recognize the hardships that they lived through. We recognize the injustice that has been done because they have not received fair compensation for the work they did while this country was in need. Uh, the Dia del Bracero was established here in Los Angeles in September 2000, and it recognizes the contributions of the braceros and also recognizes their continuous pursuit of justice. I often talk about how my grandfather came to this country when he was in Mexico, lived in Mexico, helped build this chamber that we're standing in and went back. But my father also came many years later, even after the bracero program, uh, when, uh, the World War II ended, but the bracero program continued because this country was in need of labor, and he would work the fields throughout the southwest, picking cotton, picking asparagus, picking whatever he was asked to fulfill to contribute to this country. And I know the difficulties that these men lived through. My father often told me about the times when oftentimes they were just told to be shipped off with no explanation. They lived in cold barracks with very little heating, uh, very little comfort as we know today. And so, I am very thrilled and happy to come each and every year now, uh, when I first started as a council member, to be with these men, to thank them for the contributions they made to this country in its time of need during World War II when there was a shortage of labor, and to tell them that we're still with them as they pursue that justice that they deserve. Because in fact, when they worked, 10% of their earnings were deducted by the banks and they did not, and in some instances deducted even more, and some instances did not reserve, uh, get full compensation for the work they did. With us today is the comité, the ex-braceros, and today, the fight for immigration rights, healthcare for its members, developing a future, future home of the bracero for those who will struggle today to make ends meet, and they will, and they provide food and whatever they can to its many members. So ladies and gentlemen, every time I see these men, I look at them and their faces, you could see the years of hard work they provided, working hard jobs, and I see the face of my father, I see the face of people who came to this country, contributed in its time of need, and I think this city council and this city continues, and I'm thankful that we continue to stand by them. At this time, I would like to invite Councilmember Tony Garlones from the sixth district to say a few words.
Thank you.
Gracias, Jose Wezar, and for those of you who don't understand Spanish, I'll say it in English as well. Quiero agradecer a todos los hombres, las familias que están aquí con nosotros, los braceros, porque ustedes dieron mucho a este país. Cuando este país necesitaba el hombro de ustedes, ustedes lo dieron. Cuando este país estaba en guerra, necesitamos su ayuda, y ustedes nos ayudaron por mucho que nos ayudaron. 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 Cuando este país estaba en guerra, necesitamos su ayuda, y ustedes nos ayudaron por muchos años. Empezó en 1942 y terminó en 1967. Por 25 años ustedes trabajaron aquí en los Estados Unidos por mínimo sueldo y también en condiciones que muchos americanos nunca hubieran hecho ese trabajo. Para mí, yo tengo mucho orgullo de ustedes. En mi oficina, yo tengo un cuadro de mi papá y mi abuelito. Y la razón que nosotros, la familia Cárdenas, tenemos ese cuadro es porque hay algo muy importante que anotar. Ellos están en la pizca y tienen papas. Y atrás de ellos pueden ver rollos y rollos y rollos de papas que piscaron ellos. Pero lo obvio en los ojos de Andrés Cárdenas y Siriaco Quesada, mi abuelito, el papá de mi ama, es que ellos tienen una sonrisa. Ellos apreciaron el trabajo que les dieron. Ellos trabajaron muy duro y nunca se quejaban, nunca. Y por eso para mí es muy conveniente que este país quiere el trabajador humilde como ustedes, pero a veces no nos quieren respetar. I'm very proud of these men and these families that stand behind us, because my father and my grandfather worked in the fields of the United States. In my office, I'm very, very proud of the portrait that I have behind my desk, where it has a picture of my father and my grandfather, my father Andrés Cárdenas, and my mother's father, Siriaco Quesada. And the most telling thing about that painting, which was a little tiny photo that was taken in the 1940s in Stockton, California, is that they have rows and rows of potatoes behind them that they picked, and they're bending over, hunched over, after hours of work, and somebody chose to take a photo of them. And I love that photo, because it's very telling of these men behind us. They're bent over, hunched over, after doing hours and hours of backbreaking work, and they have fresh potatoes in their hands, with sacks tied around the race and between their legs as they did their work, and they're smiling. They're smiling. That's humility. That is the face of two gentlemen who appreciate the opportunity to have a job, who came to this country and would do the work, the backbreaking work, that with all due respect, because I am an American myself, I wouldn't do. We deserve to give these men and women respect for coming here and putting food on tables of Americans, working in conditions that most Americans wouldn't even think twice of dealing with. I'm very proud of these people. These people have contributed to this great nation. The reason why they started the bracero program was because in World War II, we were short of labor. People needed to eat, crops needed to be picked, and they did that work. We, as a country, conveniently, in my opinion, said, "Hey, you're humble, you're hardworking, you'll work for next to nothing, come on over. We need you to do this for us, not for yourself, for our country, the United States of America." And they did it. And when it ended in 1967, many of these gentlemen here have never received the compensation that was taken out of their checks, and this country has never reconciled that to this day. So I think today is a very important day for this country, for our city, to recognize these humble, hardworking people. They've given a tremendous amount to this country, and they've asked for very little. I'm very proud of them. I'm proud to say that I'm the son of immigrants, and I am the son of a farmworker. My parents' dreams weren't that I would be a councilman, or an assemblyman, or what have you. They never even dreamed of that. They just wanted me to go to school, get a high school diploma, and maybe if I was lucky, go off to college. But I'll tell you what, they underestimated this great country. Because their 11 children, because of their hard work and their humility, we're able to do much, much more than that. So I stand here today, saying, by honoring them, we're honoring this country. By respecting them, we're respecting the relationship that we have with our neighbor, Mexico. Thank you, Jose Huizar, for inviting me to be a part of this. I think it's important for us to take these few minutes and recognize the wonderful work, the tremendous contribution of these men, of these families, who came to our country and did the work that most Americans wouldn't even think of doing. Picking the fruit and vegetables that we all eat every single day, and that we take for granted. Thank God we live in a great country where we can take those things for granted. But at the same time, I think we are a great country, because we do recognize people like them. And I can't forget my Filipino brothers and sisters. My father told me, "You are some of the hardest-working people in those fields." Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cárdenas. Representative for the braceros today, Baldomero Capiz.
Buenos dias, Honorable Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles.
Good morning, Honorable Councilpeople of the City of Los Angeles.
Queremos agradecer fundamentalmente este reconocimiento que se nos hace a todos los trabajadores del campo.
Would you be appreciated this great recognition that's given in honor to all the field workers?
Pero también quiero recordar que uno de los factores determinantes que logró la victoria de los Estados Unidos en la Segunda Guerra Mundial.
I also would like to remind everyone of the most determining factor of the victory of the Second World War of the United States was?
En la lucha contra el fascismo de Europa y Asia.
Was the fight against fascism against Europe and Asia.
Fue la contribución de la mano de obra de los trabajadores contratados en ese convenio binacional de México y Estados Unidos.
All that was a contribution to the labor that went into place with the Biden National Treaty between the United States and Mexico.
Cuatro puntos cinco millones vinieron a trabajar en la producción alimenticia.
Four point five million workers came to work in the fields, agriculture fields for food.
Seiscientos mil fueron contratados en las áreas de la construcción del ferrocarril.
Six hundred thousand were hired in the railroad construction area.
Estos hombres, que fueron jóvenes y fuertes en aquel tiempo, hoy se encuentran viejos y enfermos.
These young, strong men that contributed so much at that time, now they're old and they're ill.
A ellos se les debe en parte el reconocimiento que hizo el gobierno de los Estados Unidos de Norteamérica en aquel entonces.
To them, part is owed for the recognition that the United States government presented to them at that time.
Donde se le reconocía como héroes del surco, soldados del surco. Así lo manifestaban los reconocimientos de trabajo que se les daba el gobierno norteamericano.
Where the US government recognized them as heroes, soldiers of the field, heroes, as they were called by the recognition given to them by the US government at that time.
Por eso decimos que hemos contribuido en gran medida a la economía.
That's what we state, that we have greatly contributed to the economy.
Más poderosa de la agricultura del mundo.
To the most powerful agricultural economy of the world.
Que es la del campo.
And that's that of the fields.
La que alimenta sus casas.
The one that feeds your homes.
La que limpia sus hogares.
Someone that cleans your homes.
Aquellos que atienden los servicios.
Those who provide the services.
Aquellos que barren las calles.
Those who sweep the streets.
Aquellos que siempre están sirviendo a su comunidad.
Those who are always serving your community.
Por eso hoy nos sentimos orgullosos.
That's what today we feel very proud.
De las palabras que dicen nuestros representantes.
Of the words said and spoken by representatives.
De aquellos también están orgullosos.
Of the fact that they also feel proud.
De sus padres.
Of their parents.
Que fueron también braceros.
Who were also braceros.
Por eso hoy queremos hacer un planteamiento muy concreto.
That's why today we want to set something very concrete.
La historia es importante y se recuerda.
History is very important, and it is to be remembered.
Proponemos que con el apoyo de nuestro concejal y nuestros concejales.
We propose that with the support from our councilpeople in the council of the City of Los Angeles.
Que se establezca un reconocimiento de memoria histórica a la labor de aquellos que contribuyeron a esta economía.
We propose to establish a memorable history of all those who contributed greatly during that time in our history.
Un monumento o una estatua en donde se quede grabada esa memoria de aquellos grandes trabajadores que han hecho grande este país.
We propose a monument or a statue on which you can engrave the memory of those great workers, of those great men that contributed so much to this great country.
Y recordar que este país, así como muchos de ustedes de sus generaciones pasadas, vinieron como migrantes.
And remember this great country, just like your many past generations also came to this country as immigrants.
Esta ciudad es de migrantes.
The city belongs to immigrants.
Y este pueblo que compone este gran país es de migrantes.
And this city takes.
Hay que recordarlo siempre, porque este es un gran país de migrantes.
And this city that takes a great part in this nation is always remembered as a great city, because it's a great city due to immigrants.
Agradecemos profundamente al concejal, Jose Huizar, su apoyo hacia nuestra causa.
We're deeply grateful to Councilman Huizar.
Al concejal Cárdenas.
And Councilman Cárdenas for their great support to our cause.
Y que quede esta propuesta, con el apoyo de los demás miembros del Consilio, de este honorable Consilio, se tenga ese reconocimiento para esta gran gente. Yo les bendiga, y gracias por todo.
And we hope that this proposal stays with not only this councilman, but the rest of the councilpeople, so that we can accomplish this monument in the future. God bless you all.
Muchísimas gracias, señor Capiz, de parte de la Ciudad de Los Angeles. Me da mucho gusto estar aquí con el Consilio de la Ciudad de Los Angeles, a presentarles esta resolución, a celebrar El Dia del Bracero. Que viva los braceros!
Viva!
And Mr. Huizar, before we finish, and Mr. Reyes, I would like to say a few words.
Again, I apologize for not being here for the whole ceremony. Despuesa que no estaba aquí por toda la ceremonia. Estaba con la policía, a... Decirle a él gracias. But I want to say to you, señores, my abuelito was a bracero, Don Anselmo Reyes, from Juana Huato. He worked with the rail yards. He traveled, and I know where he's been, because my uncles were born in different cities, Chicago, Denver, Los Angeles. Y reconozco que los sacrificios de ustedes, como tanto como mi abuelito, han traído muchas oportunidades para la familia. Y por eso les digo a ustedes, gracias por los sacrificios, gracias por la presencia, porque es una historia real, una historia que está continuando ahora, y ojalá que ustedes puedan seguir adelante tratando este tema tan importante, porque hablamos de los derechos de ser humano. I'll just say, I want to thank them for being here. The history that they have presented is a history that continues today, and the sacrifices that they've made has allowed a family like mine to continue to be able to relish those opportunities, because of the sacrifices of my grandparents, my grandfather from Juana Huato, who did go through bracero program, and did essentially contribute back to this country. So I'm very proud, and thank my colleagues for presenting this today. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Thank you very much, Madam President. And ustedes nos inspiran, como ven, al señor Cárdenas, a Reyes, a muchos hijos de braceros que viven aquí en los Estados Unidos. Muchísimas gracias por lo que hicieron, lo que están haciendo, y ustedes nos dieron su labor, el tiempo que lo necesitamos en este país. Lo agradecemos, y vamos a estar con ustedes. Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you very much, Mr. Huizar, Mr. Reyes, and Mr. Cárdenas. Madam Clerk, first item.
Madam President, would you like to go through the special meeting right now?
Sure, we'll go to the special meeting.
Calling Narol, Alecon, Cárdenas, Grohl, Han, Huizar, Labonch, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, West, and Zine, Garcetti, 11 members present in a court, Madam President.
Thank you. First item.
First item on the special is an item in which public hearing has not been held, 10 votes are required for consideration.
Yes, and I think, Ms. Han, did you have an amendment on this item?
This is the... No, 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 that was a...
No, not on this item. Okay, number one, the special, we're on the special agenda. We are on it, yes.
Oh, thank you, Madam President. Colleagues, item 33 before us right now is to declare Monday as Jimmy Carter Day in the City of Los Angeles. Beginning, actually, this Sunday, San Pedro and Harbor Gateway are going to be the center of a very exciting project, the 2007 Habitat for Humanity Jimmy Carter Work Project. Every year, President Carter and his wife Rosalind, along with Habitat for Humanity, choose one city in the world to spend a week building homes that will be available to well-deserving families. This year, they chose Los Angeles for the week-long build to create this housing. They're going to build 16 in San Pedro and 14 in the Harbor Gateway area of Los Angeles. This is going to be an amazing week-long event. We're going to be having thousands of volunteers from around the world coming to Los Angeles to help participate and work side by side with former President Carter and his wife, Rosalind Carter. I've personally been involved with Habitat for Humanity for many, many years. I actually formally served on the Board of Directors of the Long Beach Habitat for Humanity Organization, and I have a long history with President Carter. My father and President Carter were very dear friends when he was running for President of the United States, and then during his time in the White House. When I heard that President Carter was choosing which city he wanted to use for his Jimmy Carter Work Project, I personally wrote him a letter, I reminded him of the history he had with my family. I reminded him that my father, when he was county supervisor, actually donated the very first piece of property in Los Angeles County to Habitat for Humanity back in 1991, to begin building their homes. And I told him how honored we in Los Angeles would be if he chose our city for his Jimmy Carter Work Project. So he did, and it's happening this next week. And what I love about Habitat for Humanity is, of course, that it gives people a hand up, not a handout, and if there is an intense process before families are chosen to be a part of getting a home in these Habitat projects, they must, each family must contribute 500 hours of sweat equity to help build their own home, as well as other homes. Habitat for Humanity provides homeownership opportunities for families that we know otherwise would have no opportunity to own a home in Los Angeles. And as we face a shortage of affordable housing here in Los Angeles, we know that we need to do all we can to improve the stock of housing that can be affordable to working families. And we know that nothing improves a neighborhood, a community, or a city, anymore than increasing opportunities for people to own their own homes. Kids who live in families where they're able to own their own home do better in school. We know that crime goes down in that neighborhood. Nothing helps a neighborhood better. So the Jimmy Carter Work Project is going to be a great opportunity for Los Angeles and for families to benefit from this opportunity. Jimmy Carter is one of those presidents of the United States that has used his ex-presidency to do good in this world. We know that it has been his name, it's been his notoriety, that has increased the visibility of this organization of Habitat for Humanity. And he, along with his wife, literally put on the tool belts when they come. And he is an excellent finished carpenter, and he will help to build these homes himself. So I thought it was right and appropriate that we in the City of Los Angeles, along with the concurrence of the mayor, declare Monday as Jimmy Carter Day in the City of Los Angeles, and I hope I'll have a... Los Angeles, and I hope I'll have a unanimous support for this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Han. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
I'd like to speak too.
You can speak, yes.
Yes, I just wanted to do a little shout-out on this. It's a great honor for us, as a great city, to have the former president coming. I had the pleasure of working for him. I was a White House appointee to the State Department, and he was one of our best presidents. And what he has done more than any other president that I know is that since he's been out of office, he has made such a huge contribution to the welfare of people in this great country, and I dare say, around the world. And I think the commitment to Los Angeles and to helping us build housing is outstanding. That's one of our biggest crises. We don't have enough housing here. And for our former president to provide that leadership and inspiration is just fantastic for all of us. And I certainly agree with you, Ms. Han, and thank you for letting me use your mic.
Anytime.
Thank you.
Anytime.
Thank you. Mr. Labange.
Oh, yeah. Use--
In the spirit of using multiple mics, one place there, I wanted to also say what's important. What could the rest of the city do to help join and come to San Pedro and help Habitat for Humanity? Could we volunteer?
Yes, I believe there's still opportunities for volunteering. One of the things Habitat for Humanity does, besides building these 30 homes, they have a program called Brush with Kindness. So they're going to also refurbish about 100 other homes in the area. You know the homes you've seen on your block that could use a little tender-loving care, maybe a little repairing of the porch, or the shutters, or painting? We're also going to be enlisting the help of volunteers to do those kinds of jobs. Besides building, we're going to actually make 100 homes look like they're brand-new. So I believe there's opportunities to volunteer. Come on down to San Pedro. But I also want to give a shout-out to our housing department and all of our building and safety inspectors, who are going to be on the sites, going to be ready. Our DWP has been a very big help in making sure that we've got water and electricity ready to be hooked up to these homes. This whole city family has come together to make sure that these 30 homes will be built and completed in this one week. So Los Angeles has done a great job supporting this. But anyone that wants to get involved, I think you can come on down. I think there'll be jobs for everybody. You don't have to be an experienced carpenter.
Just got to help out and give our love to the former president, Jimmy Carter.
I will.
Thank you very much. That item is now before us. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Can we reconsider item number 29 for an amending motion? This is on the reconsideration. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
Thank you. That item, as amended, is now before us. Did you want to speak on that, Mr. Labange, at all, or is that just the amending motion that's on 29? Okay. Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the votes.
11 ayes.
That item's been approved. I think, Madam Clerk, we'll now go to public comment. I'd like to ask Rudy Schwartzberg, followed by Rod Freer and Isabel Cárdenas, Arnold Sacks, and Eugene Hernandez. Mr. Schwartzberg. Is Rudy Schwartzberg here? Yes, please, you can go to the microphone.
I was told Garcetti was going to be here to listen.
No, he was excused today to leave early. I know he had a chance to speak to you before he left. Would you like to make a comment?
If he's not here to hear it, no.
I know that he mentioned to me that he'd be more than... We'd be happy to hear it. He also mentioned that he'd like to meet you in office hours, as indicated. Thank you very much. Rod Freer.
Good morning. Good morning, Madam President, councilmembers. I'm a parent at Daniel Murphy Catholic High School, which on October 5th was informed through our students, not directly to the parents, that the archdiocese was going to close the school. Since then, we have been obviously upset, but we have got over our upset, and we are getting organized now. And I'm here to ask for your help in this effort to preserve a part of Los Angeles that's been there for 75 years as an educational institution. I think it was appropriate that we came on this day, the day that you're honoring all the different heritages that this city has. And the school has produced many of the leaders that have come through this council. Councilman Parks is an alumnus of the school as well. I have enlisted the help of Isabella Cárdenas. She is a grandmother of one of the students at Daniel Murphy High School. So I'd like to introduce her and her comments on this issue as well.
Most of you know me. Hello, Madam President. Tom Labange, Councilmember Bernard Parks. I sent a press draft of a press release to all of you last night. In fact, it was very early this morning. I know you're all very busy, but I sent it anyway because we're here to really ask for your support. We cannot let the students of Daniel Murphy go through a traumatic experience of having to leave a school where they have... Their brothers have gone to, some of their parents have gone to, and that their friends from elementary school are still there, and all of a sudden just take them out. I have to tell you that I was at a rally last Wednesday in front of the archdiocese, and I could... If I could just... I mean, I don't want to cry because when I remember how they were singing their alma mater in front of the archdiocese, and how most of them were screaming to Cardinal Mahoney, "Find another way to pay," I mean, it was very touching. We cannot let Daniel Murphy be closed. And I went to a meeting last night at Emmanuel Presbyterian Church and was amazed that for the first time that we had called a meeting, more than 70 people were present. We have the support of many union leaders, many of the leaders in the various communities, and we are asking especially of Councilman Bernard Parks and anyone who works at city council or at city hall that has had students or are alumni of Daniel Murphy. We are going to have a press conference this Tuesday, and it would really show us your support if you allow us to have it here at city hall, and some of you be with us during the press conference. Councilman Ed Reyes, a lot of the people in District 1, a lot of the Latino families, their children go to Daniel Murphy. Now, although it's in Councilman Jack Weiss's district, that school serves most of the districts. It serves students that go as far as East LA, the Valley, South Central LA. So it's our concern, and we want to also have your support in asking Mayor Antonio Villar Iglesias, who is... Has said that his interest is in education, to back us up. So that's what we're here for, to ask for your support. Please join us in our effort. You will be amazed how many people are already in SOS, Save Daniel Murphy High School Support Group.
Thank you very much for both of you being here. I know Mr. Parks wanted to make a quick comment, one of the graduates.
Yeah, thank you very much, and appreciate you being here. And just to let you know, I've spoken personally with the cardinal, and we'll be making some calls and see what we can do. It's a very, very tough situation that the church is in, and part of this whole issue, the closure of the school, is intertwined in the whole issue of them consolidating and selling property as these current lawsuits are coming upon them. And so we will be meeting with some community people, and certainly, before you leave, I'd like to get your numbers so that we can make sure that we're in touch with you. But certainly, there's a lot of concern regarding the school, and as one of the... I think I graduated like the third or fourth class when it turned from a seminary to a high school. And so it's something that we're all, I think is important. I just don't know logistically or fundamentally if these decisions that were made are reversible, but it's something that I would certainly like to talk with you about.
We would like to let you know that the people that are in this support group are people that are thinking, they're visionaries. We are not going to go to Cardinal Mahoney and just say, "We don't want you to sell the property." We're finding solutions to help--
We'd like to work with you on that.
--alleviate the financial situation, which is why if we could... If many of you could meet with us, with a group of us, then you would be advised of what we are planning to do.
Be glad to do that.
And I think you would find that the support is--
And my son also graduated from St. John's, or Daniel Murphy at the time. But no, we'd be glad to meet with you, and I'll get your information before you leave.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Next speaker is Arnold Sacks, followed by Eugene Hernandez.
Thank you very much, Arnold Sacks. I come before you to address an item that is actually a motion that was brought forth that hasn't appeared before the city council regarding a corroboration, corroboration between the county and the city to review the regulatory environment as it pertains to the region's transportation for higher industry. Fortunately, the county board of supervisors put it on their agenda for October 2nd, which I have a copy of. And what caught my eye was the transportation for higher industry phrase. And I went before the county board of supervisors on the 2nd to speak on this item. And I happened to mention to them that I brought with me an ordinance from a city in the county, ordinance number 98-1180, enacted in May of 98. I have a copy of that also. And in this ordinance, it has a list of definitions. And what I bring to your attention, because you're going to be corroborating with the county, is this definition. As used in this part, section 5.72.020, as used in this part, the following terms shall have the meaning set forth below. Automobile for hire shall mean every motor vehicle, every motor-propelled vehicle, or pedal-powered taxi, parentheses, pedicab, other than taxicabs, used for the transportation of passengers for hire from one location within the city to another location within the city or beyond at rates per mile, per trip, per hour, per day, per week, or per month. Now, when I mentioned this to the county board of supervisors, "other than taxicabs" seemed to me to mean excluding taxicabs. I was corrected by the mayor of the county, and he mentioned that, no, that actually includes taxicabs. I bring this to your attention because you will be working with them on this item in a joint task force.
Thank you very much. Eugene Hernandez? Mr. Hernandez? Not Dan Weissman.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. As you know, you will be addressing the issue of the Department of Water and Power rate increase on Wednesday, and the ENE committee will be addressing it on Tuesday. I rise to bring some information to you, and it's being passed out to you right now. I hope to get some eye contact and some connection with you at this time. Because what I've done, and I've just half an hour ago been made the executive analyst for the Oversight Committee of the Department of Water and Power and Neighborhood Council Oversight Committee. And that's because several of us, myself included, have gone into the details and have been provided with information from the Department of Water and Power as to how they make their bills to us. There are 755,000 bills for people who are owners of homes, and that's for electricity alone. How many there are for commercial and industrial, I don't know, but that has to add several hundred thousand bills. The Water and Power says that the 3% increase in water and power rates are going to add $1.74 to each of our monthly bills, if we're an average person. Well, I don't know too many average people. This is Lake Wobegon, folks. If you ever listen to Prairie Home Companion, where all the children are above average, all the women are beautiful, and all the men are city advocates. Okay, well, this isn't quite Lake Wobegon. Anyway, this is here. But in this situation, many of us, in the San Fernando Valley especially, and hotter areas of the Los Angeles city, are going to be faced with much, much larger bills. Many of them will be $500,000 or over $1,000 per year. I hope you will look at this very carefully before you accept the data that the department has been giving you, and will look very carefully at the data I'm giving you, because I think it'll add to your information. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Close this public comment. Madam Clerk, next item.
Next item is item number two.
Was that called special by cards, or... Okay, yes, Mr.--
It was--
Rosendahl.
--Madam President. And I've talked to all sides of the cards, and there will be no public hearing, but we want to continue this item until the 14th of November.
Okay. So this item will be continued to the 14th of November, and the individuals here will come back then?
Yeah.
Okay. Great. Thank you very much. The item will be continued. Next item.
There are motions for posting a referral.
Those will be posted and referred.
Madam President, there is one excuse on the desk. Councilmember Gruel requests to leave at 12:30 PM on December 7th for city business. A motion is required.
Yes, Ms. Perry moves. Mr. Rosendahl seconds.
And that clears the desk.
Thank you. Do we have announcements today, colleagues? Announcements?
Make a Difference Day throughout the country, and we all make a difference. I announced it when I was opening the meeting, but be involved with Make a Difference Day throughout Los Angeles. And also, the Los Angeles Dodgers, and also the American Red Cross have a fundraiser to 11 o'clock tonight, also sponsored by local media, to drop off and make contributions for the Southern California Relief Association, to the American Red Cross, to help our neighbors in San Diego, Riverside, San Bernardino, North Los Angeles County due to the firestorms. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Han.
Make a Difference Day on Sunday, that's perfect for the beginning of the Jimmy Carter Work Project in Los Angeles. This Sunday, from 11:00 AM to, I believe, to 5:00, we're having a big festival down at the Harbor, Birth 83. There'll be food, live music, arts and crafts, games, celebrity appearances, and there'll be a multicultural faith service from 11:00 to 12:00, again, right down there on the waterfront at the Port of Los Angeles, from 11:00 to 5:00, as a way to kick off a week-long way to really make a difference in Los Angeles by providing 30 homes for people to own. So come on down to San Pedro Sunday afternoon, it should be a great day.
Thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
I would just like to encourage the public with Halloween coming up, is to use the park and rec facilities that have formal programs, and not to allow their kids to wander the streets and have these tragedies that we have each and every year. But many, many of our park and recreation and government facilities are having official, well-supervised Halloween programs, and so we just encourage them to take advantage of that.
Thank you. Any other announcements, colleagues? If not... Mr. Rosendahl.
To point a privilege, the 14th isn't going to work. We're on, what is it, the League of Cities bit, so that motion that I continued, item two, is to the 9th.
To the 9th, okay. It'll be continued to the 9th. Mr. Smith?
I just want to thank Ms. Gruel and Mr. Cárdenas, his staff, and Ms. Cárdenas and Mr. Zine for dropping by our North Valley YMCA fundraiser last night. We put another quarter million dollars into the YMCA--
Right.
--our biggest ever, and also my chief deputy Mitch England, who organized the whole thing. Thank you all for the support of the YMCA.
You're welcome. Thank you. It's always a great event. And now you take a little credit, Mr. Smith, I think, yeah.
Twenty years.
Yeah, 20 years. Any other announcements? If not, do we have adjourning motions? Do we have any adjourning motions? We do, okay? If everyone could please rise for adjourning motions. Thank you. Ms. Han, do you have an adjourning motion?
Let's adjourn today in the memory of Mary Dolores Gibson, who passed away October 18th at the age of 89. Mary was a resident of Parmalee Avenue in Watts for 60 years, where she was very active. She's survived by her husband of 67 years, William, and her children, William and-- She survived by her husband of 67 years, William, and her children, William and Sharon, as well as two grandchildren and four great-grandchildren. The services are scheduled for tomorrow at Beulah Baptist Church. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Han. Yes, Mr. Rosendahl.
Thank you, Madam President. Sad to announce that Benjamin Strauss, the father of Vicky Strauss Kennedy, Max Kennedy's wife, who live in the 11th district, died on October 21st, better known as Ben. You know, he was only 71. Dashing, handsome scion and chairman of the Philadelphia-based Pep Boys Auto Parts Firm, known coast to coast for its timeless caricatures of Manny, Mo, and Jack, died of prostate cancer Sunday at his home in Haverford. The son of Maurice Mo Strauss, the ringleader of the original trio, Mr. Strauss joined Pep Boys in 1964 after practicing law in California. He was named president in 1975 and was chairman from 1978 until he retired in 1992. Mr. Strauss was not only successful in business, but he also was passionate about his family, the outdoors, philanthropy, the arts, sports, and particularly the Philadelphia Eagles. He married Bonnie Hudson in the early 60s, and they had a daughter, Victoria Strauss Kennedy, as I mentioned, and a son, Evan, before the marriage ended in early 1980s. Mr. Strauss was deeply committed to Philadelphia. He founded the Strauss Foundation in 1970, which supports education, science, and medicine. He also supported the Outward Bound Program for underprivileged youth. In 1996, Mr. Strauss married Elena Cosmeyer, and the couple had a daughter, Spencer. One month ago, he took her on a father-daughter camping trip in the Poconos. Mr. Strauss was a founding member of the Young Presidents' Organization, served on the boards of the Philadelphia Ballet, the Man Center, the National Museum of American Jewish History, Friends of Rittenhouse Square, and other organizations. He also was a founding contributor to the Kimmel Center. In addition to his wife, son, and daughters and sister, Mr. Strauss has survived by five grandchildren, a brother and his former wife. Services are private, but I want to say that his daughter, Vicky, is a great leader in Los Angeles with her husband, Max, and has been involved in so many children activities, and a special sympathy to Vicky in losing her dad. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. Seeing no other adjourning motions, Madam Clerk, please call the roll. Thank you. This meeting's now adjourned.